Well, I want to thank the town council for having the Riverfront Committee here tonight on your agenda. I am joined here tonight by Lisa, who is the vice chairman of our committee. Others, I believe, are watching virtually through the Zoom connection. The catalyst for the Riverfront Committee plan really began back in 2016 when a large-scale natural gas power plant was proposed for town property at Century Brass. It was on the fringe of our beloved downtown and across from the Hoosatonic River. As New Milford citizens vocalized loud objections, the developer withdrew his interest. I remember meeting with then the former mayor and asking him to form a committee to plan, not only for the future of Century Brass, but to connect the riverfront corridor so we, as a community, could determine our own destiny and take advantage of the riverfront and adjacent town-owned properties. Our committee began its work in 2017 when the town council appointed us. I want to share a quick quote with you, just recently made by Middletown's mayor, Ben Flossheim. "One hundred years from now, people will be standing on this beautiful riverfront, enjoying what has come before, and not really knowing or caring about the behind-the-scenes decisions. But it's exciting to think about what we're doing today because it's going to pay off for generations to come." This important work was made possible by a $170,000 brownfield area-wide grant coming from the Department of Economic Development. The grant enabled the committee to return the firm, to retain the firm of WXYZ, WXY, there is no Z, Architecture and Urban Design, which is a nationally-recognized master planning consultant with extensive expertise in riverfront revitalization. They work with both the committee and the community to create, collaborate, and refine our many ideas and aspirations into a cohesive vision. I would like to thank all the former and current members of the Riverfront Committee and to all of the community members and appointed and elected officials who attended and participated in our public workshops and presentations. Their support and your support is critical to realizing this vision. I want to thank our town staff, some of whom are here today, who shared their expertise and insights to the town council for its encouragement, and of course, to Mayor Pete Bass for his foresight, his steadfast leadership, his encouragement for coming to more meetings than he'd like to say, and giving up so much of his valuable time to focus on this project. The brownfield grant, as you can see, is really based on developing a comprehensive plan to remediate and redevelop neighborhoods that have multiple brownfields, such as our riverfront, and to transform those brownfields into community assets using a comprehensive area-wide approach for reuse and redevelopment. As I said, there was a $170,000 state grant. The town matched it with $30,000 that they spent for the marketing analysis, which helped to form the basis of some of this plan and the Plan of Conservation and Development. And we also raised $10,000 in private donations towards that marketing analysis. The Riverfront Committee, we were told by the town council, think big, be transformative, think out of the box, and we did. And so this is kind of a reminder of the vision that you gave us and the charter that we have adopted, to create a dynamic 21st-century riverfront integrated with New Milford's Town Center. This will catalyze community development, economic resiliency, sustainability, and revenue and job generation, all about protecting the Hoosatonic River and its ecosystem. This is a long-range plan for the future of New Milford. We were last here in front of the council on March 10th, and at that time, we received comments and suggestions which have been incorporated into this plan. You talked to us about expanding the gateway, improving the visual of the gateway, incorporating into our plan. We are working to improve entrance ways and to incorporate the buildings along Route 7, and we are making more walkable connections. COVID didn't stop us when it came on March 23rd, 2020. We kept working virtually. Our brownfield studies commenced. Brownfield studies were a requirement of the grant. We had to perform three Phase Ones and one Phase Two. So those studies began right as COVID began. We did do a final public presentation of the plan, which incorporated the town council's feedback, on April 2020, and brownfield studies were still going on. In September 2020, the Riverfront Committee adopted the final plan. They sent it on for finalization, typo corrections, compilation, and to develop an implementation This, as some have said, is a transformational plan. Some have said it's a game-changing plan. The plan begins with thematic goals that have actionable strategies. We want the riverfront to be sustainable. We want the riverfront to continue to be the recreation capital of New Milford, as I call it, with our playgrounds, our skateboard park, tennis, et cetera. We want it to be walkable, walkable and connected to the downtown, and we also want to feature arts and culture. We will do, we will use these goals and themes to leverage our riverfront brownfields, and then all of this will lead to economic vitality and town-wide revitalization. Now, one caveat before I begin this next slide. Nothing can or will happen on Youngsfield Road until provisions are made for new ballfields and for public works to be relocated. Those are kind of linchpin decisions that are going to have to be made. They are not new concepts; they've been talked about for years, and they are part of this blueprint for the future. So let's spend a little time here, and let me walk you through it. And I know it's hard to see; it's hard to see on the screen; it's hard to see up there. But we'll start, they started out with, is this? Let me point to, okay, with arts and culture. The beginning of the arts and culture is the outdoor amphitheater. My assistant's coming to help me right now. Thank you. Why is it not pointing? Points on you.
I have number seven. Westward, yeah, just something to remind me.
Oh, there we go, here we go. She'll see me when I drive. Anyway, Chief Sarudo. Number one here is the amphitheater area, and that's where we hold, we will hold concerts; we can be holding plays; we can be holding all kinds of events there. Number two is the 911 memorial look-aloud, because we will be redoing up in Patriots' Way, so the 911 will get its own, really, place of honor in Youngsfield. Number three is the multipurpose festival grounds, which are, here we go, right in this area. So this is where currently we have the two softball fields. Number four is hotel and event space, which would be up here where the current DPW is located in that area, and it will be adjacent to the fields, the festival grounds, the amphitheater. There'll be a walkway connecting everybody right to downtown, and they will be parking at the facility for hotel and event space users. Next is the Native Meadows Sculpture Garden. So as you know, this was property acquired by the town from the Northwest Conservation Service. Part of the plan is to have perhaps a sculpture walk-through there and to create almost our own mini central park here in downtown New Milford. Now we come to the walkable connections. There's an eight, there's a path, trying to, oh, I can make this bigger, good. This ADA path that will, oh, but it makes it bigger for you, too. Sorry. There's an ADA path that toes the line up along the slope here, and it's also a ridge walk. And then there's an overlooking staircase that comes down into the park, and we have a pedestrian add-on to the southern part of Veterans Bridge here. That could be a pedestrian walkway and connects down, or it could be a continuation of the bike path. Currently, there's really no good way to get from the north side of the bridge to the south side that's safe, so we took that into mind here. And also, well, I'll get to that number in a minute. We also have a pedestrian bridge that is somewhat pie in the sky, that hopefully, you know, this is kind of at the end of our project. If we're able to find funding and support for it, it would be fabulous to have a pedestrian bridge going across the river to Native Meadows. It is not, we can do this plan without that bridge, just so that you understand that. But if perhaps some funder or some mechanism comes forward, it would be nice to be able to add that. Key here, and I'll talk about it again in a minute, is a realigned Youngsfield Road that rather than coming out right before the bridge, comes up a little east of the bridge, which would allow us to put in a dedicated turning lane into Youngsfield Road, and then people coming east-west, going east, will be able to continue without backing up the traffic. And that's really important, because as you know, that's, that leads to a lot of backup that goes down and route seven. Let's see what else. We have crosswalks, as I pointed out, and for recreation in here is, it's an ice skating kind of rink path that will turn into a splash pad in the summertime. There's a sledding hill right here, so in the winter, kids can go sledding. So we're trying to make Youngsfield a Four Seasons facility. There will be a concession stand and some shade down in here. And again, you know, this is just a drawing, nothing said in stone that it's going to be that shape, you know? So there's a lot of work still to be done. The playground is still here, the skate park is there, the tennis courts are here, and the basketball court. And as well as, as you know, the New Milford River Trail, which the town made a major investment in doing along Youngsfield Road, that will continue, and these yellow lines are the continuation of the bike trail as well, going down West Street. And of course, the kayak launch that's currently there will remain there and will become part of what we're going to be calling the Hoosatonic River Blue Trail. Milford is blessed with having the river run north-south through the entire town, and we have multiple portages to go in and out, and I think it's something that we should really market and bring those kayakers to town to stop and have lunch and shop. From sustainability, we will be using erosion-controlled plantings; there will be flood-control plantings and flood-control measures taken in, and I think that wraps up pretty much what's all on this plan. As you can see up here, come on, honey, where are you? Let me see. There we go. Up in here, that's the crosswalk at the rail road station, and that goes up to Bank Street there. Next slide, please. So this is an artist's rendering of what this could look like in the winter. It's a rendering; it's not to scale; it's not to exact proportions, but it gives you a pretty good idea of what could be at Youngsfield Road. We were very careful, and the committee worked very, very hard to make sure that what we're showing in this picture is architecturally consistent with the town of New Milford, because that is key and important. So the plan consists of a number of different areas in terms of economic development, which we garnered from working with our economic development, or our marketing consultant, basically. And this was given to WXY, who incorporated it into their plan, and it includes a series of different areas. We have some, maybe at the end of the road here, we would have some maybe maker space or light industrial that maybe has retail components to it, like a furniture maker selling their furniture, things like that. We have townhouses; we have apartment buildings, the hotel and event space, which I spoke of before, the Riverfront Park, the native preserve. We have mixed-use buildings going in, proposed for over here, and even for over here. The consultant actually went into the downtown to look at areas where he could identify other development opportunities that would still stay with the character of the town. We have our gateway over here, mixed-use, the old Southworth Building and the building kind of where Spring Street is in that area. This whole area can be revitalized as well and brought into the plan. We have some live workspace; we have public realm enhancements, like pocket gardens and other, and tree plantings. And of course, the, in the inset, this is Century Brass, where we were looking at putting public works. And he does include the East Street School way at the end here. There's no use proposed for it, but basically to point out the fact that there really should be some linkages to the East Street School, because it will be a community resource of some sort, and also the buildings behind it, Glen Air and Butterbrook could use some pedestrian connections to the downtown. So here we are with circulation and parking, which is always a big question for everyone. And as you see, we have the, that's a tricky one, a realignment of Youngsfield right here. So this part of Youngsfield stays the same, and it's really, you know, as we come up here, it starts to shift more to the east and then to align up at the top and shows for east, for east and west connections, turns. We are talking about, you know, Patriots' Way will be accessed through, where you can access it now off of Youngsfield Road, and we're talking about the potential, and everything's potential and possibility, over here. Come on, I'll have to buy myself a new one that I can aim better. Okay, right here, this is the top of Patriots' Way. As you know, right now, and Jack Healy, our Public Works Director, will vouch for this, he, Lisa Heda, myself, Mayor Bass, Diane Cliffe, we stood out there at that corner doing traffic counts one day for the study, and I mean, we cringed when we watched how trucks would come out of Patriots' Way and, and have to dive into traffic, because there's really no sightlines, there's really no traffic stops to, you know, guide them, and it's really an accident in the making. And really, the only people who use it as a throughway are the trucks, because they can't get out any other way. They can't do the underpass, you know, by where the old ambulance barn is. So we've talked about if, you know, once Youngsfield Road is realigned, Patriots' Way could be closed, you could come up this way and park, and then those two buildings, and then at the front, there is parking, so you can enter in from Bridge Street to park there and still access downtown, access those buildings, access Youngsfield. You know, parking was a very big consideration in, in this whole plan. Let's see what else. So also, you can see that down by the, by Youngsfield itself, when Youngsfield enters, there we go, right here, that would be a parking area adjacent to the kayak line, so people could park their cars with the kayaks near where they're kayaking, because right now, it's really not convenient parking or, or getting back and forth. And all told, when you, when WXY was finished with their analysis, they felt they would be able to add 75 new public access parking spaces. So that kind of addresses the parking problem. I'm going to ask Lisa to come up and take it from here.
Make it so this can work for me.
So this is the first.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. So how do we make this all happen? How do we take a plan and make it reality and not just something that sits on the shelf for the next 20 years? Keeping the momentum and building on this will take diligence. So what did the committee do? So we kind of tried to chunk things up and keep moving, and we identified some short-term achievable wins. As you heard in the mayor's comments, the Riverwalk has now become a one-and-a-half-mile loop from Town Hall down Bank Street to the crest of Youngsfield, all the way down to the river and back, a nice walking loop, and even with connectivity to Native Meadows. So Native Meadows, we have this vision of transforming it into a haven for residents and visitors with an accessible echo culture and just a haven for respite, signed walking trail, and clearly-marked entrances. And you've seen some of that in Jack Healy's posts that are in progress, and thank you very much, Jack. Patriots' Way, as Leba mentioned, offers another gateway into town. Many people don't see the entrance to that parking lot. It's an opportunity for some beautification, some widening, and really making it stand out. Some upgrades and improvements have already taken place. And last but not least, we've been successful continuing to get brownfield grants. In fact, just last week, we got another $200,000 brownfield grant for an assessment as a first step for remediation and improvement for hidden treasures, right? Yep, we're excited about that. But that's not all. There's more that we're working on. So you might wonder what branding is doing here with the Riverfront Committee, but branding is really important, and we threw up an example that a resident came up with, just as a thought starter. So branding in this context is about a tagline, a tagline that's exciting and creates an emotional connection for people, and that can be leveraged. So how does that relate? Before we can do things like wayfinding and signage, we need some type of continuity and look and feel. So that's why branding is foundational and why we are taking that into consideration. Leba just mentioned the Youngsfield realignment; I won't go through that again. We're also working on something for weekenders and residents alike, the historic trail and an industrial trail. So think of a series of walks that talk about the history of New Milford and help make us a destination. We're working with key members of the Historical Society, who have joined our committee as advisory members, and have identified points of interest, and the narratives are being written as we speak, so that we can then put them in publication on websites, in brochures, and, you know, let's all hold our breath, maybe even a state-of-the-art phone app where the phone guides you around to the different way sites. So that's very exciting. And as Leba mentioned, also in the works is this historic, I'm sorry, Hoosatonic Blue Trail, a series of portages along the Hoosatonic, starting at Gaylardsville, key stop downtown at our kayak launch, and continuing on maybe all the way to Hidden Treasures or Lover's Leap. So another great reason for people to come and visit and enjoy our riverfront, as well as the residents get enjoyment out of it. Longer term, what also do we have on our list? We have developer outreach, sharing the town's vision with developers, getting their feedback. We all know COVID has kind of thrown economic plans up in the air, so we need to get some feedback on what they see as projects that would be new and exciting for them as well. But the riverfront still has a role to play, as Leba mentioned, making sure the community character and charm is maintained. So there's going to be a balance, and it's a key responsibility we have. We're going to keep identifying and looking for brownfield grants and potentially looking into land bank options. So this is a way of helping private property owners clean up their properties. This is a not-for-profit type of structure whose purpose is to encourage reuse and redevelopment. But we can't do it alone. It takes not a village; it takes a town. So town resources, again, like DPW and Parks and Rec and others, we all have to work together to create so many of the things that we're talking about. I'm not a slide reader, so I'll let you read that. Again, the first thing people are going to see when they come to town is a welcoming gateway. We put an example of a different type of kiosk for information. Think more along the lines of a large state park. It's more informational; it's not just a bulletin board, something that really tells people, here's all you have to do in New Milford and the surrounding area. And just increase the awareness of all that we have to offer on the new tourism website, which I believe is due to launch in August. That's very exciting. So from top to reality, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the first and second diagrams in particular, but you'll see these little illustrations of public enhancements, pocket gardens, so things that make people stop, enjoy, and spend time, maybe some hotspots out there as well. When they do that, they're more likely then to take that next step, buy a cup of coffee, stay for lunch, maybe do a little bit of shopping. So from an economic standpoint, those, those little pocket gardens and public enhancements are really important. So you just heard, and I think we're going to hear a little bit more in a moment, from Mayor Bass, about some other projects that are kind of foundational and are like key pieces to the puzzle that have to go into place in a certain order, freeing up space to create this vibrant riverfront, creating a state-of-the-art sports complex, so that the ball fields might be moved, and relocating DPW so that we could potentially realize boutique hotel and event space. So we have all the pieces, and the committee is dedicated to keeping that plan off the shelf and in process. So how, how do we do this? Well, we need everybody working first and foremost towards the same vision and making sure all the different stakeholder organizations are going together to that vision and not working at cross purposes. So here's what we see as the Riverfront Committee's role. I'm not going to read that to you; just give you a minute. And from the ordinance that created the Permanent Riverfront Revitalization Committee, here's a couple of snippets. Develop and recommend to the town comprehensive strategies as may be deemed appropriate for the Riverfront District in coordination with town agencies and the Corporation for New Milford Economic Development. Implement the town-adopted Riverfront Renewal Master Plan. So this is what we see as the committee's continuing role. And then there's the role of the Economic Development Corporation, right? So implement development on behalf of the town, apply for grants for the cleanup that we've identified, and if possible, work with land banks to help remediate the private contaminated properties. The town has a role to play as well. Whatever that final structure may be for the Economic Development Department, here are the types of functions that they would play in a riverfront development. Not going to read this to you. And you have a very important role. Nothing can happen without you, the town council. You have the power of approval and implementation. We can only make the recommendations. And saving, the most important for last, town residents. Because we are talking about town properties, they have the ultimate input in the form of our beloved town meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Leba.
So there have been many other long-range planning efforts going on throughout the state of Connecticut, and I'm just pointing out four of them. The closest to us is the Brookfield Town Center, and as you know, they've been talking about building a town center. They weren't as fortunate as New Milford to have our wonderful green and, you know, our architectural assets and our local downtown merchants and restaurants, so they had to go out and build one from scratch. And so they have been working on it. They started before 2000, but they started working in 2012, they actually drafted their first long-range plan for the center, and, and they're continuing to work. What I'm trying to point out here is that it takes time to make things happen. It takes time to plan, to build consensus; it takes time to get funding from the state. A lot of what's been done in Brookfield, from the Greenway Walkway to the Brookfield Center, sidewalk improvement programs, to other incentives, those have come with the help of the state of Connecticut. And so we're beginning to build connections with the state DEC. They have been very supportive of the grants that we've submitted so far, and we anticipate that they'll continue to build on their investment here in New Milford. The Merritt and Green is fantastic. I actually went there a couple of years ago to, to see it. It was being, it was an open tour by the Connecticut Landscape Architects Association, and I was fortunate enough to be guided by the town's economic development director, who kind of gave me some insight. This is also a plan that has been in the making. This was a flood plain; this was a dump; this was garbage; this was industrial hazardous waste; this was silver-plating plants that left all their toxic chemicals in the water. And again, with the help of the state, because without the state's money, a lot of this doesn't happen, this is what it is today, and it's vibrant and it's growing. And I learned a secret there that we should incorporate into any And I learned a secret there that we should co-, incorporate into any plan that we do. Whoever develops on part of this property has to put some of their money towards the maintenance of the property. And as you know, that's going to be a long-term, um, commitment also is to not only build our downtown riverfront, but to maintain it. And so, um, you know, that's just something I thought was really interesting to note. Um, Middletown started, and we had, uh, the town, um, a city planner from Middletown come to one of our very first Riverfront Committee meetings because we wanted to learn what other towns were doing. They started in 1986, and then they did the report and they put it on the shelf. And then they did another few things, and it went on the shelf. In 2000, they kind of dusted everything off and started again. And they have been doing a lot of work. They actually, um, moved their sewer plant off the waterfront. That was millions of dollars to do, but they did it because they knew they couldn't have a true riverfront revitalization with a sewer plant in the middle of it. Um, and they're continuing to, to move on. Riverfront Recapture is the Connecticut River in Hartford, and that's been going on since 1981. I mean, it really has come forward now. Um, they're, they're still doing new projects there. It continues to expand. Um, but again, the point is 2000 to the present, 2007 to the present, 1981 to the present. This is a long-term plan. And so while some people say, why has this taken us five years to come to the town council today with this plan? It takes a lot of planning, and as Lisa says, it takes a town. So we are here today to ask for your support and your leadership. We are asking you to adopt this long-range riverfront renewal plan and provide the needed resources over the coming years for which you will receive justification for the request. There will not be any, we just want your money and give it to us. You will know how every cent will be spent and on what it will be spent. And we want to keep the momentum going. So once again, I want to thank the town council for your support over these past five years, and I hope to be working with you for the next 15 or 20 years until we've completed our riverfront renewal plan. Thank you. And Lisa and I are available for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Chris?
Couple. I'm not familiar with land banks. Can you just give me a rough overview?
Sure. Land banks are private nonprofit corporations that will purchase, um, properties that are contaminated, and they will then, um, assume the liability. See, one of the problems is the town, when we got the Hidden Treasures grant, um, that was town-owned property. So we, and, and it was contaminated before the town owned it, so we have no liability for what's in there. But if we were to buy a piece of property, um, let's just throw out, there's a piece of property right next to Public Works where those oil tanks and the gas pumps are, and it's privately owned. Um, we cannot go in and remediate it without assuming liability. So a Connecticut land bank could go in, um, make an agreement with the property owner. They can apply for grants, um, and then they can clean the property up, and then they can do the transition to town-owned property.
Hello, Chris. We don't have another Century Brass.
Yep. Yeah, we don't want to know.
No, no, absolutely not. No.
Is that what we're thinking about on the properties on the south side of Veterans Bridge?
Potentially.
It could be, yeah.
Okay. Thank, thank you for your work. It's really good stuff.
Thank you. And thank you for coming to some of our meetings. You were there.
You sure.
Dave?
Just a comment. We have three mayors in this room this evening. First time I've ever noticed that.
Oh, it's happened before. We've, we've all been in the same room before.
But, uh, but it's nice to see, uh, former mayors actively engaged in, uh, the town's interests as well. And that's really very much appreciated.
Thank you. You know, David, 30 years ago, probably this month or right around this time, I brought forward a plan for the downtown, and Pete will remember this as a downtown merchant. Downtown was tarred streets, cracking, falling apart, light poles everywhere you looked. And I brought forward a, a vision plan. Um, the next administration completed the plan, but I started with the vision. And this vision for New Milford and what it can be and what it is, um, is, has always been with me, and it's my passion. And I'm just so honored that Mayor Bass, you know, shares that same passion and, uh, and is helping hopefully to make this a reality.
Any other questions for Mayor?
I have a question.
Katie?
Do you have any, um, approximation of the price for the supply, uh, needed resources over the coming years?
No. I mean, we're going to, we're going to chunk this out into pieces and, um, and then come in. Um, the biggest pieces obviously are going to be the public works movement, um, movements and the, and the ball fields.
Right, which have been talked about, that, that's been talked about several years easily. Um, and no one has any idea what that might cost? No?
No. I mean, I, I don't know if the mayor has any idea or if...
Actually, Katie, after this, we're going to ring Jack up. We're going to talk about, uh, DPW move.
Good.
And also Doug and I, we're going to talk a little bit about the ball fields.
Good.
That have been bantered about.
How propitious that those are on the list.
Absolutely.
Um, I guess, I, I just, to define a little bit for what you're asking of us, it's a wonderful plan, and you've definitely thought outside the box. And, um, I think high aspirations are perfect. Keep them up. But the supplying of needed resources over the years and the fact that we would know exactly where every penny was going, well, that's pretty much true when we do give out money, that we do know where it's supposed to go anyway. So you're just saying you would like our endorsement of your overall plan, and you would come to the council at some point, but you won't discontinue your grant-seeking and all the other things you have.
Absolutely not. Grant-seeking is key. Um, private dollars are going to be key. Um...
So we don't, we're, we're not looking at foisting on taxpayers for some long amount of time that it would be all from them. I mean, you need, you need to have buy-in. It's our town, so we, as our, should be involved in all ways. Uh, but you would continue to do that?
Yes.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Don?
I just have a comment. I want to thank both you ladies for an excellent presentation. It was great. And, uh, I've always, along with the ball fields over at, at the high school, have had a premonition about, you know, the future of this town. And that's a jewel down there in that area that we're discussing. And I've had several conversations with, uh, with, uh, the mayor about, uh, moving certain things in ball fields and using that as an amphitheater. Uh, I think it'd be a great venue, not only just for the music and stuff, but to bring more people into the town. So I commend you on the work you've done. It's been excellent. And, uh, I look forward to even helping join you sometime. So thank you both.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
Dave?
I just want to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a 2021 Long Range Riverfront Renewal Plan as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much.